It's seven o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Monday, May 16, 2022. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Mayor Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whalen?
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the families and the community members in the city of Buffalo, New York, who have suffered an incredibly terrible loss and tragedy this last week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. The first section of tonight's agenda is the proclamation and presentation section, and the first proclamation will declare May 15 through May 21, 2022, as a National Public Works Week. And I believe for this, we have Mr. Bucic from Public Works to accept the proclamation to be read by Councilmember Linda Farmer.
All right. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people, and whereas these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water, sewers, storm drainage, streets, solid waste collection, public buildings, and other structures for our residents. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments, especially ours, is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 15, 2022, through May 21, 2022, as National Public Works Week. In the city of Lakewood, and do hereby recognize the contributions which public works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, proclaim the 16th day of May, 2022. Jason Whalen, Mayor. Congratulations, Public Works and Engineering Director Paul Bucic. Would you like to say a few words?
Briefly, if I could. Thank you. Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the City Council. Once a year, we are accorded a proclamation for the public works employees who work for our community, and I thank you for that. It is a national recognition of the hard work put in by the men and women who not only work for the local jurisdictions, but also work for the other entities who provide the services. In Lakewood, we're fortunate that we have dedicated individuals who maintain our streets, who maintain our streetlights, our signals, who maintain all of our parks, keeping them green. They pick up the litter and trash that other individuals throw out their windows or they dump. We also have the value and benefit of working with our partners, such as the Lakewood Water District, Lakeview Light and Power, Pewter Sound Energy, Tacoma Power Utility, and others, Pierce County Sewers, that provide all the sewer services for our community. All those individuals, in addition to the folks who work here at City Hall and at Front Street and other locations throughout the city, are all public works employees. They're the ones who show up in the wee hours of the morning to close off the road when the water's flooded. They're the ones who show up and work 12-hour shifts twice a day for days on end when we have snow and ice events. It's not necessarily a glamorous profession, but it's a profession that we all are dedicated to, and we all appreciate the work that we do for our communities. And thank you for the acknowledgement on behalf of all those employees, both here at the city and those who perform work for the city. I thank you for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a picture, Mr. Bucic.
Sure.
Right, exactly. Well, next, we're pleased tonight to welcome Joe Clark to present a Fort Silicon Park Invitational overview. Mr. Clark is past president to the WSCCCA, and I'll let him explain the acronym, and AAA Vice President and Lakes Cross Country Track and Field Coach for many, many years. The Fort Silicon Park Invitational is a large event that has happened at Fort Silicon Park for a number of years, and is coming yet again, and we're pleased to receive the overview.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. I think it's fitting that I just follow the public works because I've had the benefit of working with the Parks Department since Fort Silicon became a part of the city of Lakewood. The WSCCCA is the Washington State Cross Country Coaches Association. I just stepped down as being president. I figured that Roosevelt was 16 years, and 16 years is long enough for me, but I'm still alive. So with that, I know that some of you, actually, your children have run at the course at Fort Silicon Park. Paul has stood in the finish line for that. What I just came really to share a little bit about the event, and I'd love to, at a later date, maybe talk about, you know, individually with you, answer any questions you have. Part of it is because this is an event in its 23rd year, would have been 25th, but, you know, circumstances. And it's something that I want to see continue on, you know, long after those of us that have been involved or, you know, retired and out walking, you know, in the parks and watching other people do the work. When it first started out, I was a young coach at Lakes High School, and my team wanted to have an invitational. So we just thought, we'll put on a little meet in Fort Silicon Park. We had 15 teams, and that was 1998. Back then, it was a Pierce County Park. And at the time, there were multiple courses all throughout the park with all different groups, and people would unfortunately do things like take spray paint, not chalk or flour, and paint the trees and paint, you know, so nobody would get lost. When the dog park came in, I was part of a group that met with the city of Lakewood, and we worked out a plan to create one course. All the schools use that. And a set of guidelines for marking the course, things like that, which has been really, really beneficial. Over time, the Fort Silicon Invitational has grown. It, in this document, there's a little bit of information about the history, but right now, we have 53 high schools that are committed to coming next year, and it's, you know, still four and a half months away. Our high point was just before the pandemic. And last year, unfortunately, it was canceled just before the meet because of potential weather. We had over 4,000 registered participants, and cross country is a sport as three of you at least know, parents go to. Parents go watch cross-country meets when they're on a Saturday. So we were anticipating well over 7,000 or 8,000 people in the park for that period of time. There's a bit of information in the back that talks about the economic impact to the city of Lakewood. That was put together by Travel Tacoma, the used to be Tacoma Pierce County Sports Commission. They've been a supporter of the meet. When I first started out, my plan wasn't to make this giant meet. My goal has always been that cross-country athletes and their families, their parents, deserve nothing less than the best. Just like the Friday night high school football game or basketball. Both my daughters were basketball players. I'm also involved. In fact, Dawn and I just talked a little bit with the Westside Classic, the cross-country championships at Chambers Bay, which kind of after Fort Silicon started to grow, we became the site for the league championship, and then I became the meet director for the Westside Classic as well. So really, I just wanted to share a little bit of the history about what's nice. I guess what's unique about Fort Silicon Invitational, and maybe a lot of cross-country invitationals, is nobody's on the sidelines. We have, when we started out, we had four races. We had a varsity boys, a varsity girls, a junior varsity boys, and junior varsity girls. In cross-country, seven athletes are your varsity team, and everybody else is junior varsity and gets to run. We've now grown so that we have 17 divisions, 17 races. We have a youth run that is free for, and we have anywhere from, you know, five-year-olds up to middle schoolers. We have a community event. It's a whopping $5 entry fee for that. Any of you that have run a road race or something and, you know, paid 40 or 50 or $60 for the privilege of that, we just said $5. This isn't about, we just, that's essentially to pay for, you know, pins and food for the volunteers. And then we have 17 different races. Over time, it's developed, so now we have an elite division. We have teams, this year, we have a team coming from Idaho, which is those tourist dollars. They'll be, they're not driving over the morning of. We've got teams from Walla Walla, Spokane, Tri-Cities, Yakima. So it's become a really a regional event. It's one of the five largest meets in the Northwest. So there's our meet, Hole-in-Wallup in Lakewood, Marysville Twilight, and a meet in Portland, and Idaho. So, and the only reason that meet has grown is because we've had fantastic volunteers. Like I said, Paul's been on the finish line before. We've had a focus on serving the athletes and the parents, the coaches, and just making it focused on, on just being the best meet it can be. It's run by volunteers, and there's some, a little background. The way high school meet is run, one like that, we work through our ASB in our school district. And so entry fees go to the ASB. We have a booster club. Our booster club does not pay any salaries or anything. The goal of the booster club is to do things that ASB can't do legally, like ASB can't provide food for the volunteers. We feed the volunteers and the coaches. So that comes from the booster club, little things like that. In, I don't know, the 23 years, I've never received a nickel nor have any of my coaches from the invite. That money goes back to the kids. There's a statistic I just ran into. I have two daughters. I also coach track and field. I'm the girls' head coach. Women in leadership, more than 60% of women in leadership were involved in athletics as a child. And I believe that's really, really important. I believe it's important for every, every student to have a chance. When I recruit, I recruit band. I recruit ASB. I don't go to the PE class to recruit the fastest kid. I recruit. And, you know, everyone's going to get better, but I digress. So anyway, the history of the meet is in here. It's a fantastic meet. Mayor Whalen, I would love to have you continue the tradition of, if your daughter's not racing somewhere else, because she runs cross-country, I know. Speaking, we have had previous mayors speak at the meet and just kind of do a welcome. If it works out, that would be great. If it doesn't, maybe some other member of the council can. I believe that Mr. Anderson has officiated at meets at the park before when his daughters were running. And I guess what I'd say is, that's what makes the sport of cross-country really unique. It really is community. You'll see on the, on the cover, this is one of the 17 races. This is just one. That's the start of one of the girls' races. Three years ago, in the elite race, the top boys' team in the state and the second-ranked boys' team in the state squared off. They were separated by less than three points, which was also the same case at, you know, at the state meet. But like I said, we have three divisions. We have a gold, silver, and a bronze. Bronze divisions for the small schools, because if you're going to Fife High School, it's kind of hard to compete with Tacoma High School, which has a population, you know, three times the size. So we have a bronze division, a silver division, and a gold division. The golds for the teams that are truly elite. They plan on being at the state meet, but everyone has an opportunity. There's no difference in the size of the prizes for any of the divisions or anything like that. So my goal for being here is just to let you know about this because it's not my meet. It's our community's meet. And I would like to see Fort Silicon Invitational thriving, you know, 20 years from now. And so for that, can't take just one person. You know, it takes a community. And huge shout out to the Parks Department. They have been fantastic. One of the things, another benefit, is we provide our equipment that we've acquired over the years to run a meet like that, and we put it in the Parks Department, and all of the local schools share. They just, they're going to have a meet, Clover Park, Silicon, Charles Wright. They'll call me up, get the key. And what we're doing now is we're sharing the resources, sharing the wealth. When you have a high school cross-country budget, it's typically maybe $400 for 50 kids. So if Clover Park High School or Silicon High School doesn't have to spend $100 on flagging and cones because they're already there, that's a benefit. So the Parks Department, like I said, they're just fantastic. I meet with them in the spring. We'll go over the course. They have it memorized. I couldn't ask for a better partnership. So thank you very much. I encourage you to look through this. I would love any, and welcome any ideas that you have that, you know, would help us. I don't want to be standing up here saying, here, give me money. What I want to do is, I want to grow the meet and make it a meet that people want to come to because of what it is. And personally, while I love Chambers Bay, I'm the meet director for the Westside Classic. Fort Silicon Park is typically referred to now as one of the best true cross-country courses. Chambers Bay is a great championship golf course, cross-country course, but it's not true cross-country. It doesn't have a big hill that you meet at 2 and 1/4 miles, where sometimes athletes say they get religion on that hill. I've had athletes say, "Lord, forgive me, for I have sinned. I went out way too fast, and I have a hill and a mile to go." So thank you very much. I really, really appreciate this. If you have any questions.
Mr. Clark, thank you very much for coming. I think Mr. Anderson has a comment, and I want to take you up on your invitation. I'd be happy to come speak at the invitation, whatever role I can play to help out. I'd be happy to do so as long as I watch my daughter for the quick few seconds she passes by, so.
At Fort Silicon, you can see your athlete multiple times. My daughter's last race at Fort Silicon, she wanted me to watch her. I saw her seven spots on the course. I could barely walk the next day, but seven spots. Thank you.
My kid did 514-ish in the 1600 this last weekend, so she should be quick, so.
You might only get five spots.
Joe, I'd just like to thank you for all you've done over the years. As you know, I've been involved in that community for, as a certified coach and official. For 10 years, I was the starter, head referee at Bellarmine for track and cross-country, which took me away from volunteering there, but I could still get to the Westside Classic. And you've grown this meet in a phenomenal way that it has truly become a regional, regionally-recognized place to be on that weekend. So thank you so much for bringing it to Lakewood, and if there's something we can do to promote that with the city resources. Mr. Copra, hint, hint, well, we'd be pleased to do it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, we look forward to it. Thanks again for coming and for educating us about the incredible partnership. We appreciate it. Thank you. Well, next, we turn to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be sent in advance to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest Lakewood, Washington, or via her email at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the City Council electronically, and a clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance, and I know we have received some.
Mayor, we received comments in advance from James Dunlop, Christina Manetti, Ben Olson, and Dorothy Wilhelm.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter related to city business under the public comments. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments are also accepted. If you would like to provide live virtual public comments, you will need to join the Zoom meeting via the information visible on your screen. Outside of public comments, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise hands for the duration of the meeting, but you will not be acknowledged. Your microphone will remain muted unless you are in queue for public comment. There are two public hearings this evening. If you would like to provide testimony specific to the six-year 2023 to 2028 Transportation Improvement Program or the Shoreline Restoration Plan Updates, please do so during those particular public hearings, which will be later after the public comment session. So I will first call on those Zoom and phone attendees who have signed in, and then I will call on those in-person attendees who have raised their virtual hand. But before I do so, I just want to kind of give an overview for those who may be here with regard to the library. We did receive some written public comments in advance, and I just want to clarify again. I got a call driving here from a neighbor and friend on the library as well. I think there was some confusion out there. Lakewood, as a city, does not own or operate the Lakewood Library. The Lakewood Library is not even owned or controlled by Pierce County, but the name creates some confusion. It's run by the Pierce County Library Association or System, excuse me. And it is its own separate taxing district, and it's run by its own board of directors. And so while we consider ourselves as a city very much a partner with the Lakewood Library, and that's what we are working on with our consulting work to try to engage in a more holistic public outreach to help facilitate good public comment about what the future of the library should and perhaps could look like. I just want to remind all of us here tonight that the city doesn't own or operate or control the Lakewood Library. We are a partner, and we're certainly trying to help in the future direction, as I'm sure all of you are. So with that opening comment, again, we're going to turn to those who are signed up to comment virtually first, and then we'll select those who are on the sign-in sheet. The first individual on the virtual hand raise is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening. Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, used to live in Lakewood. You know, law enforcement, of course, is one of the biggest part of your business and probably where you have the most employees. But I really strongly feel you're about to feel some really strong pressure on your law enforcement, not only because you're a city amongst all kinds of other cities with criminals running around. 26 states have signed on to a force called the Border Strike Force. And the Border Strike Force is there to try to stop the thousands per day of illegal immigrants coming into the country, which are not properly vetted and often mixed with serious criminals. The defining moment for yourself was 2018, when your state voted for a sanctuary state. And then it was made even stronger when the president illegally invited people to cross the border illegally against the Constitution. So there's going to be a lot of pressure because this strike force will act as a funnel to funnel more of those criminals into sanctuary states. And by making it clear that they're not, they're not welcome in their states unless they've been properly vetted. Well, there's a math problem here. And the math problem was obvious. How do you get 5 billion people into a country of 325 million? You know, our forefathers said, our democracy would not succeed unless the people were educated. Well, I guess if you don't know math very well, you're going to vote for people that have no regard for math because the people that voted for, the people who passed these laws obviously didn't understand math very well. And there's a number of reasons for that, probably. Your own school paid attention to the discipline, the student discipline thing that they've written, and there was a, there was a discussion by two councilmen trying to make it more specific because it is so vaguely written that you can do almost anything, and there's really no discipline there at all. And the, the school district has been gaslighting you by, with propaganda, by cherry-picking the good schools and not telling you about the programs where they are lagging behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haugen. Next, Ado Equitas.
Good evening. My name's Ado Equitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. It's good to hear about the library. Obviously, we've heard some complaints about it, too. I guess my one question would be, if the people of Lakewood are saying that it shouldn't be moved, okay, the city doesn't run the library, but what are you guys doing to help boost that narrative? I hope that you guys are using the word of the people to go back and say, "Look, the people don't want this, so can we think of a different direction?" But I'll move on from that because you explained it, and I appreciate the explanation. One point of contention that I have is last week, a member of my party came on and was talking about a news article in reference to a city council member. Now, I'm not going to go into any detail, but he was shut down and told that he should be addressing the city council as a whole, and he tried to explain to you all that he felt that this was a city issue. And he was shut down. But Mr. Haugen just got on and talked for a while about the state of Washington, and he didn't even really mention the state of Washington. He was talking about 26 states. So how is that a city issue? And why wasn't he shut down? And that's not the first time that happened. I've seen y'all come out with some confused faces. Mayor Whalen? Mayor Wayland, I haven't agreed with you last time, and that doesn't happen very often. So it seems like we should be a little bit more clear about what is and is not a city issue. In my opinion. You guys addressed the tragedy in Buffalo. There's a lot of affected families there. There's a lot of families that are going to miss loved ones. There were people that tried to help. The security guard there was an ex-cop. And he engaged the shooter to try and stop him. And he gave his life for that engagement to try and save others. It's a brave man. Thing is, that dude was arrested. He put a gun to his neck, and after killing ten people and severely injuring three more, the cops arrested him.
Thank you, sir.
But Said Joaquin, he died.
Thank you, Mr. Equitas. Appreciate your comments tonight. That is the last individual who has raised his or her hand for virtual public comment, unless I'm missing someone, Ms. Schumacher.
There are no other virtual hands that are raised at this time, Mayor.
Very good. So we'll now turn to the in-person sign-in sheet for those wishing to address the council tonight. And the first is Marcia Kloss.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a member of the volunteers at the Lakewood Library. I have been for seventeen years. We do a lot of good things for that library, more than people realize. The comments that are going on about the library being dilapidated is far from the truth. The elevator breaks down, yes. What building does the elevators break down? Every building has a broken down elevator once in a while. We're not swimming in filth. There is no water pouring down out of the ceiling. They make it seem like it's a derelict building, and it is not. It is a historical building. It's a beautiful building. The people that go there are children, adults, seniors. Everybody loves that library. We've seen it. We give sales twice a year. We donate money to the library so they can do the upkeep on it. Where it goes, I don't know. It's like eighty thousand dollars a year. We have the book sales. We're very dedicated. The group of us down there, we're called Moles. But, uh, we're very dedicated to the library, and we feel very strongly about it. I honestly did not know where else to turn but to come to you people and beg for help. Please, I don't know where to turn to stop them from closing that historical building. It is a historical building. I've been down that road. I've, I had Matt Driscoll down here three and a half years ago. He took pictures. He brought his camera crew. They did the whole nine yards in that building, and he printed a page and a half in the News Tribune, a whole page and a half about the Lakewood Library. And it died then. Then they stopped for a while. I don't know where to turn this time. There's a few of us that are more than willing to go the extra mile to save this building, but I don't know where else to go, so I came to here to beg you for help. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, and I'll, I'll let everyone who's here tonight interested in commenting on the library certainly do that, and that'll give you some feedback. We don't often do it in the public comment, uh, period. But we are participating in a consulting bit of work that will help facilitate exactly what you're doing tonight, which is providing good and robust public comment about the future of the library, and uh, we have dedicated thirty thousand of a sixty thousand dollar consulting contract from city funds to make that happen so that your voices can be heard, uh, by a subcommittee who will be reporting not just to the library board, but also providing feedback to us as well as a, a partner here in the community for the Lakewood Library. So I, I do appreciate your comment. We're willing and uh, looking forward to hearing all of you tonight who are signing up to make comment. But I just wanted to give you a little heads up that we are moving forward with some public participation work that probably wouldn't have happened had the city not nudged it forward to engage the consultant, to do the interlocal agreement, and to help fund it. So, Virginia Rawlings, you're next.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm well aware that this body does not have jurisdiction over the Lakewood Library, but my concern is that the people in the community seem to have been steamrolled. Supposedly, the Pierce County Library System is setting up an advisory committee. It hasn't even been fully formulated. It hasn't met, and yet decisions about dates for closure have already been made without any input from the community. And I come to you this evening because you are the one body who can represent the population of Lakewood and their concern for what's going on, and the fact that they've had really no input in the whole decision process. This is supposedly what democracy is for, is to have an opportunity to have our representatives speak for us, and that's what I ask of you. The Lakewood Library before the close down for COVID had more in-the-door traffic than any other library in the entire system. Um, it's a, it's a very popular place. People of all ages and, and backgrounds come to utilize the library. There are folks who could not get along without the computers, for instance, that are available for use there, uh, free of charge. So I simply ask that you carry on, represent us, uh, if you can, knowing that there's a great deal you can't do, but if you can speak for us, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Dorothy Wilhelm, you're next.
This is a nice young man. He, he is a nice young man, isn't he? Yes. See, I, I think that I'm so happy to be here. Of course, I'm happy to be anywhere at this point, but I feel as if there is such a gap, Jenny, in what you were saying and in what we've heard and what we know. This is such a wonderful opportunity to go on together. Uh, and I happen to have some media things that we can do something with, too, but you know, I am the perfect person. I, I have put myself forward at this moment as the poster girl for the library because I have grown up with the Tensler Library. I came here in nineteen seventy-three when it was Tensler, and now, like the library, I've sprung leaks in places you don't want to hear about either. And I think, I think we have to look at the things. I think we have to look at the things that the library means, that just as Ginny said, what we will lose, we can work together. We can do this. This is, this is one thing. As I look back, my, and my son across country, he didn't do cross-country racing in the library. Well, maybe he did. He went in the Navy, you know, we never know about them. Uh, but, but what we, we, we really are family. When my husband died, I came to the church, yes, after all, I'm a good Catholic girl, came to church, then went to the library to get information to deal with grief and to start a new career. My kids, as they grew up, in fact, I have a word here from Dr. Chris, my son, the doctor. Dr. Chris Wilhelm writes, "The library off Gravely Lake Drive was my main library when I was growing up, long before Lakewood was its own city. It got me started on my path to a doctorate and a career as a teacher. It is a welcoming, comfortable library where one can relax, read, conduct research, and meet with people. It's an essential cornerstone of a strong community. Keeping such an invaluable space open and in good repair is surely a worthy investment in a Lakewood that people can be proud to call their hometown." I do like that boy. But for all of us, what we said about, about the research you can do, about services that we couldn't pay for. Uh, of course, imagine our horror when it discovered that our, the next son was running a numbers game when he was in junior high school with the racing sheets in the library. He is the county attorney in Chaska, Minnesota now. So I just know, you know, we are family, and, and we can all work together. We can find a way. The question isn't, isn't, can it be done? Darn right it can be, and we can all work together. I'll leave my phone number for you. Thank you very much. Where is my laptop? Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Mr. James Dunlop, you're next.
Uh, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. I'm commenting on a veteran who died in two thousand and six. He's buried in New Tacoma Cemetery, in the Veterans Honor Garden. During World War Two, he graduated from Lincoln High School in Tacoma and joined the Eleventh Airborne as a parachuter. The unit fought the Japanese in the Philippines, seeing action in Leyte and Luzon. That's quite something for a family to send their only son just out of high school into a major conflict zone. Teenage soldier became part of the forces occupying Japan. He was promoted to Staff Sergeant and ended his service as Chief of the Drafting Section. He drew up many of the maps that were included in a book titled "The Angels: A History of the 11th Airborne Division, 1943 to 1946." Russell Garrison's time in Japan had an impact on him. We can see this in Lakewood Library, which was designed to bring us close to nature and which originally had a Japanese garden on the Gravely Lakeside. Lakewood Library was arguably the pinnacle of Russell Garrison's career as an architect, and in nineteen sixty-four, it won the first honor award from the American Institute of Architects and the American Library Association. I should also mention that in nineteen sixty-two, Russell Garrison was Lakewood's Man of the Year. Lakewood Library is special, and it is fitting that a city taking such pride in its military connection has a library shaped by the, by the vision of a World War Two veteran, a vision which won a prestigious national award. But this building is being demolished by neglect. And someone didn't properly maintain the library and now announces that it's in such bad repair, it needs to be vacated. After that, it's probably pulled down and replaced with apartments. I know, we all know that the fate of the library is for the Pierce County Library System, not for the city. But if the council can find a fraction of the courage shown by a teenage Russell Garrison, you'll find a way of preserving the library for the purpose which it was intended. So please do what is right for both the community and the city's civil and military heritage. Save our library.
Thank you, sir. Christina Manetti is next.
Hello, I'm Christina Manetti, and I live in Lakewood. Um, I just wanted to bring a few issues related to the library to your attention. Maybe you can hear me better if I have.
That's better, thank you. A little closer to the microphone.
And, um, so you probably all had the disturbing news as well. You probably got the emails about the dilapidated state and all that, which was quite alarming, right? Because I live, my parents live at Kitty Corner, and my father goes there like three times a week, and actually, I think he was trying to get on the Zoom tonight. And it, you know, it's not dilapidated. And, um, so we were like wondering what was going on. My, you know, we've been kind of monitoring it. My mom called last summer, and then I wrote to them, and nothing seemed to be like, you know, uh, that kind of urgent, and there are conflicting reports about what's going on now. Um, so, of course, we were, all of us were disturbed that it's going to close like suddenly at the end of the month, right? And so we thought, wow, what's happening? We should really see the document when the Friends of the Library gave it to Pierce County Library System. This was like, you know, this is, this is probably arguably the most important civic institution in Lakewood. I mean, not only is it an architectural jewel that hasn't been really properly polished lately, but, um, you know, this was the, the fruit of the city, the, the people of the city. I mean, this was their, their work and Mr. Tensler's generosity, you know, that we have this beautiful library. And so the Friends of the Library asked the, the president, Mr. Robert Estrada, for the document, and he's the only one who has the key to the filing cabinet, and he refused to show it to them. And even board members. So he said, only after the, the meeting at the end of the month, and we need it now, of course, because I'm also a member of the Friends of the Library. So I tried to call him myself, and I called the number I found in the internet with the public information, you know, with the, about the, the nonprofit. And the number that, that he gave there, actually, when you call it, it goes to Angelo M. Yakoboni Library in Los Angeles County Library System. So that kind of tells you, like, he treats it like a joke. He didn't think anybody would ever call there. And like, now I can't find them. I can't get the document. I can't look. So, um, I mean, I know you don't own the library or anything, but I was hoping that like we could like mobilize, like to make that, you know, the jewel that it should be in Lakewood. I mean, the, the Friends actually gave it to the Pierce County Library System, and maybe it's time for the Pierce County Library System to give it back. They gave them three hundred fifty thousand dollars to repair it at the time in nineteen ninety-three, and now perhaps they can give like a couple million, you know, because of inflation or whatever. So that would be great, right? So maybe we could like mobilize the forces. Thanks. I love libraries, so.
I think it would be a consistent statement that everyone in this room loves libraries. Many of us grew up going to libraries, and it is a jewel, needs to be sustained. Mr. Spieth, Glenn Spieth is next.
Glenn Spieth. I've been in Lakewood since nineteen sixty-three. I don't remember when the library was built, but I do believe it was donated the property or the money or whatever was donated by Tensler. That's why it's named Tensler. It meets all the qualifications that Lakewood has to become a historically designated building. Only I do know city council would never approve it. And the reason is, it's not owned by the city. It's not owned privately. It's owned by the county. Well, you do own Lakewood. So why can't you designate an important Lakewood property with a historic designation? Now, I also know it's so easy to get rid of a historic designation because there's one in the works right now, Hopkins House. They can't get a bank loan on their property because it's historically designated. So how are we ever going to save any historic property in this city that means something to the citizens of this city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spieth. Next, Noel Sheldon Dale Hardbury. I, I think you found it. Thank you.
There are not many Noels running around, so I'll go ahead and start talking anyway. Jurisdiction is kind of a scary word, but I think heart touches the people of Lakewood. The people of Lakewood go to that library. They don't know. They don't know about jurisdictions and all that kind of stuff, but they go there and they appreciate it. And I think we need to honor that, and we are a part of Lakewood and that library. So maybe we can just break that wall down a little bit, as some have suggested. But I want to talk about the bones of the building a little bit. It was a civil defense designated building, and there are two things with those buildings. One of them, oh, there's a strong building, let's make it a civil defense building. And the other thing is, we're going to build a building, let's bring it to specifications that go beyond. And that's what that library is. I was down there one time when the people were working on the elevator, and he was trying to build, drill through so he could put wire in it. And he says, wow, when is this ever going to end? And he said, that foundation, concrete, is over 12 inches long, so it's built as a sturdy building. It's got good bones, and I don't think they should tear away those good bones for something else that's going to be, I would just imagine, less. Now, let me talk a little bit more about the information that is presented by the library. It doesn't have a foundation, it's just presented. Typically, I'm used to having at least three bids on a contract. The bids are to be professional, no under-the-table kind of stuff, independent, and, okay, we got a roof leak, it's rough. Okay, how much is that going to cost? What about the plumbing? What about the electrical? They, the library has not done that, so they have no foundation for their, for what they're saying. If they said, well, anyway, my time is up. But there needs to be credibility, more credibility than is going on right now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, and I know you're a Lakewood resident, but I just need to have you say that on the record.
Oh, I'm not a Lakewood resident.
Okay.
I have been a volunteer for the library for over 20 years, and I'm on the floor, but of course, I'm not--
We'll adopt you. It'll be fine. Thank you very much. Next, Mary Horn signed in, but no interest in speaking tonight, Mary. There's a bunch of other folks who have signed in, but they say no in terms of not wishing to speak, but you may have changed your mind, and you certainly have the chance to speak if you'd like. So if there's any other member of the audience who has not signed in, who would like to change their mind about addressing the council during the public comment period, feel free to come forward to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Helen Wagner. I am from Lakewood, and I understand what you have been saying about the library boards really being the last word on this matter, but I'm kind of hoping that the council will put some pressure on, so I will start. It's hard to imagine the heart of Lakewood without its library. In the past, schoolchildren have used the facility for researching term papers and conducting meetings for school activities. It is nested in a beautiful, peaceful grove of trees. However, this is nostalgia, which perhaps isn't too popular nowadays. It has been said that it would be too expensive to replace the roof or whatever is wrong with it. Obviously, it's less expensive to replace things than it is to build a whole new building. Building a new library, and I've heard in a shopping center, I don't know whether that's true or not, sounds as though it defeats the purpose. As a library, it's best used as for a destination rather than part of a shopping trip. And this is a small library. To be a hub of activity for job seeking, perhaps repurposing another building, if that is the problem, might help. Such a location in a different building could be in a shopping center. We are in danger of destroying the character of our community. Please help us not tear down our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals wishing to address the council?
Hi, my name is Melissa Knott, and I live in Tacoma. I have lived in the Tacoma-Lakewood area for the majority of my life. I have utilized the Lakewood Library and libraries around me for many different reasons my entire life. As a child, the library was one of, one of the places that I was capable of feeling safe. I had a very tumultuous childhood, so therefore, I placed myself inside of books to be able to escape certain things that happened in my world. When you take away a library space, and even if you're going to replace it later, there's still a huge amount of loss that happens by the people, because libraries are not just places that are filled with books. Libraries are one of the last places that we can exist without deciding to buy something, without being forced to act like we're buying something. Libraries are places where people come together to talk about their passions. They're important places that many of us who have grown up around here need. And this library in particular, along with the libraries in Tacoma, like the downtown library, they're, they're, they're all places that we have come to understand as places that, that give us a feeling of safety. Please revitalize our spaces instead of destroying them and deciding to build something maybe fancier. The people want to be able to know our spaces still. And just like she said, and probably other people have said, it is more expensive to build a whole entire new building than it is to replace a roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm also a teacher. I spent some time as a librarian, so I just was compelled. I really like what I'm hearing. To me, the most important thing for a student's success is reading, because if they have, they can read, they have a key. And I just was thinking, what I was talking about, the parks, I don't even know if it's doable, but Fort Silicon Park was a pretty cool park when Pierce County ran it. Became a jewel when the city of Lakewood took it over. I don't know if it's even possible, but maybe that's a jewel, too. I don't know if you could do it, but, you know, I spent some time as a librarian, taught elementary and high school, and libraries are important. And I know you know this, and I know there's not, you're trying to figure out what you can do as well, but I will say that Fort Silicon Park was a nice park. City of Lakewood made it a jewel. And so I have seen City of Lakewood take things, not just that, and just transform them. This town, if you look at the town center and think about what it was when I first came to Lakewood 30 years ago as an educator, it's, you've transformed it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other individuals wishing to address the council during the public comment session? Anyone else? I'm just going to close by Ms. Schumacher.
Mayor, we have one individual, Ben Olson, who's raised their virtual hand.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Olson, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks. I just wanted to say that I've never participated in one of these councils, it started off pretty crazy, but I really appreciate everybody's comments. I live just down the road, and this library is pretty amazing, and I'm not really adding anything because I think everybody's done it, but it's really pretty, it's a very special place, and just want to raise my hand and say, maybe we can do a miracle and figure out what's up with the Pierce County Library System, because it doesn't sound, doesn't sound legit for, doesn't sound legit, and so I don't know why that is, and appreciate you listening to me, and I hope you have a good evening. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Olson. Welcome to your first council meeting.
Thank you.
Laurel Lemke has her hand up. Laurel.
Hi. I wanted to let you know that they have, libraries have people, they're really social service agencies as well. Many times when I've been at the library, I've seen people that are unhoused, who are talking about going next door to get dinners. I've also seen people who have some issues that are on the computers and the libraries being very supportive. I became aware when I worked at Western State Hospital that there's a role for social workers at libraries, and there's been studies done at that. In King County, in the King County Library System, there are peers that are in libraries. I've shared information about that, that have helped people with resources. And so I think besides the multipurposes that the libraries serve, is to realize that it also has social service aspects and for, you know, connecting people with resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemke. And just for the record, you're a resident of Lakewood, correct?
Yes, I live in Lakewood.
As we know each other, so thank you for coming tonight. Anyone else either virtually or in the audience wishes to address the council during the public comment period? If not, I just want to thank you and take this moment to extend my appreciation. I'm sure it's echoed by all of us here. We're making the public comment on tonight's large issue, the Lakewood Library here in Lakewood. I also want to emphasize that the process is, we understand it going forward at this stage, is to do exactly this, is to get good comment from the public to help guide the library board in its decision-making process, whether to renovate in the existing location, whether to rebuild in the existing location, or whether to rebuild in a different location in the city of Lakewood. I don't think there's any indication that there's going to be anything other than a Lakewood library here in Lakewood, so that's a positive thing for all of us. But those of you who have a heartfelt opinion on this, and many of you do, please, when the information comes out about the public process and the consultants who are assisting the engagement of the public, feel free to attend, and we will try to make sure that the information as to the where and when is either posted on the website or certainly made available, because it's important, obviously, for all of you. So thank you again for coming, and you're welcome to stay if you'd like. So otherwise, we will move to, public comment will be closed, we'll move to the consent agenda after public comment is closed. Thank you. So we now move to the consent agenda of tonight's meeting. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of April 25, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of May 2, 2022. C, motion number 2022-35, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with David Evans and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $78,686 for surveying services related to the Ardmore Drive to Whitman Ave, 93rd Street Sidewalk Project. D, motion number 2022-36, authorizing the award of a construction contract to R.L. Elia Company in the amount of $425,132 for the construction of the Phillips Road Sidewalk Project. E, motion number 2022-37, authorizing the award of a construction contract to R.L. Elia Company in the amount of $2223,245 for the construction of the Silicon Boulevard to 88th Street Sidewalk Project. F, motion number 2022-38, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Partners for Parks in the amount of $150,000 to develop organizational capacity to raise funds to support the Fort Silicon Barn, excuse me, Fort Silicon Park Barn Restoration Project. G, motion number 2022-39, approving a concomitant agreement between the City of Lakewood and Emerald City Enhanced Services Facility, ESF. H, motion number 2022-40, reappointing Richard Martinez and appointing Kate Reed to serve on the American Lake Management District Number One Advisory Committee through June 2, 2025. I, items filed in the office of the City Clerk. I, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of March 24, 2022. II, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of April 20, 2022.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to remove at this time? Mr. Branstadter.
Very good. Any other items to be removed by any of the council members?
If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus item F?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Farmer, that we adopt the consent agenda minus item F. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda minus item F has been adopted. We now move to motion number 2022-38. Madam Clerk? Which is item F.
Motion number 2022-38, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Partners for Parks in the amount of $150,000 to develop organizational capacity to raise funds to support the Fort Silicon Barn Restoration Project.
Very good. And for purposes of getting some discussion on the table, do we have a motion to adopt motion 2022-38 at this time?
I'll move to the motion 22, 2022-38.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Councilmember Branstadter, that we adopt motion 2022-38. Is there a further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion in that this is a incremental step in making the decision as to whether to go and renovate the barn in Fort Silicon Park, that I am-- I have one concern about the contract itself, in that it's, it expects Partners for Parks to complete all the work, to develop the capability to do the fundraising, and this is sent you this contract is for. It isn't to raise any money, but it says you'll build all of your capacity within one year. And then, I guess, you start to then actually raise the money, and as we talked about, we're expecting them to raise a fairly large and fairly specific amount before we start to commit public money to this project. And that this is the largest project of this type that we've started into. We've had some smaller projects that we got sunk costs into, and then the partners weren't able to actually do, commit to do the fundraising, and we decided to go ahead with them anyway, and some of them have turned out-- And some of them have turned out different than initially envisioned, but, but well. But I guess I just wanted to iterate that the way that this is set up, it is still a part of Partners for Parks developing a capability and then seeing how successful they are, okay? It doesn't provide any funding for them to actually undertake their fundraising efforts. You know, and I worry, well, they're gonna come back in a year from now and say, we developed the capability, but now we need a budget to be able to, to use the capability to launch a program that, you gotta spend money to raise money. So I just sort of want to know that this is, this is a reversible, I'm gonna support it, but it's a reversible step that these funds may end up being sunk if the matters of inflation and the matters, because I don't know that the cost estimates of where we originally were talking about fundraising goals are very static right now in the way things are. So I guess I just made my, made my point that this isn't a foot on the accelerator. This is, we're still inspecting the car to see whether it's gonna run.
Indeed. It's an expensive Tesla, but we're hopeful that it gets us to the starting gate on the fundraising process, so. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Further comments? If not, all those in favor of adoption of motion 2022-38, signified by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion 2022-38 has been adopted. We now move to regular agenda. Public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for the public hearing on the six-year 2023-2028 Transportation Improvement Program. And for this, I will call on our CAPR Projects Division Manager, Mr. Ted Hill, for an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council and the public. Every year we bring this forward. City is updating its six-year Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Program, or as we call it, Six-Year TIP. Updating this program is an annual process required by state statute, meant to assure continued consistency with comprehensive planning goals and to evaluate current transportation needs. The public hearing tonight is an important part of the process, affording the public opportunity to comment on the program prior to its adoption. The final draft of the TIP, 2023 through 2028, was developed over the past few months. It outlines over $180 million in transportation-related capital improvement projects the city intends to pursue over the next six years and beyond. This program does not include routine operation and maintenance activities or Wash.Dot Lib. projects. Those functions are taken care of outside of this program or funded by others. The Six-Year TIP is a planning-level document, and as such, the program is not fiscally balanced with respect to the current or anticipated city revenues. Implementation of the TIP occurs through the city's biennial budget and capital improvement process. Recent grants awarded help to maintain a healthy capital improvement program. Projects must be included in the current TIP in order to be eligible to receive most transportation-related project funding. The draft program was presented to council last Monday at study session, May 9. In addition to the document, sorry, in addition, the document is or will be on the city's website very soon and requests comments be made by public through social media. Any comments received through tonight's public hearing or via social media will be reviewed by staff. Any required modifications can be incorporated into the final Six-Year TIP, which is currently scheduled for adoption on the June 9 council meeting agenda, and we look forward to receiving comments.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Hill before we proceed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill.
Yep, thank you.
So this is the time set for this public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program for the years 2023 through 2028. If you would like to provide live virtual testimony on this public hearing, you'll need to join the Zoom meeting via the information, either telephone or the meeting ID as you've seen listed on the screen, and raise your virtual hand to be called upon. If any member of the audience wishes to address the council during this public hearing, you certainly may approach the podium if you haven't already signed in. I don't have anyone signed in, but that doesn't preclude you from addressing the council during the public hearing. So at this time, Madam Clerk, do we have any virtual members of the audience who wish to address the council during the public hearing?
Mayor, we have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Any members of the public, Mr. Spieth, who wish to address the council and present testimony during the public hearing? Approach the podium.
I'm Spieth. 14 years ago, the city took 14 feet off the front of my property on Silicon Boulevard. That left my driveway 14 feet out into the right-of-way. That's caused a problem for some time. Makes it difficult to walk from the sidewalk down into my driveway and across the miter hole that is left by the mail carriers now. I lost four mailboxes when they first put in DeLong's Drive-In. They neglected to put any kind of a white barrier, or white painted area to show the traffic they needed to move out rather than jumping across my driveway into my yard. Students from Lockburn have always walked down the south side of Silicon Boulevard. And it's not a difficult trek. I mean, it's not an easy trek. I've walked it many times. There used to be blackberries that made you walk out in the street, tree limbs, trees, all of that. Some of that is taken care of now. But it's still a difficult walk with no sidewalks, just a little narrow path right next to the highway. Students from Lockburn walked down that area to go to 7-Eleven now. That's only been this last year or so. But they were doing that for many years prior, just going home. South side of Silicon Boulevard, where they walk, has been dangerous for a long, long time. In February of this year, February 11, actually, a car turned in on the wrong side of the street to go to 7-Eleven. Instead of going in 7-Eleven on the side of the yellow barrier, they ran up on my lawn and hit the yard waste container, threw it across the driveway. Then they bounced over the driveway and hit the berm where you go into what used to be DeLong's or now the 7-Eleven. That happened at 2:00 in the morning. My wife heard it, who is deaf, or almost deaf. Anyway, she backs out on that street because it's the only way we can legally get out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spieth. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify during this public hearing? On the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program Updates. If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to the public hearing on the Shoreline Restoration Plan Updates. And for this, for an overview, we have our Planning Manager Tiffany Spear appearing virtually.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I will share my screen very briefly to show quickly what's happening tonight with this public hearing. This is a hearing for the Shoreline Restoration Plan that the City of Lakewood adopted first in 2019. This is not the full Shoreline Master Program, but rather the Restoration Plan, which is an accompanying document. And there are simply two small amendments that have been proposed through the process at Planning Commission, where there is an annual meeting where the Planning Commission hears from the city as well as community members about restoration activities that they have conducted over the prior 12 months. And then this year, in addition to that, Public Works and Engineering Department brought some suggested amendments to the Restoration Plan. So here on this screen, you'll see the first is to remove paragraph 18 under section 4.2, which is related to the implementation of the Chambers-Cruelover Creek Watershed Action Plan. The second is taking out a clause that was just a Scrivener's error, to leave that there, under section 7.2. And so both of these were heard at the Planning Commission in their public hearing. They are recommended for approval by the City Council this evening. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Spear? Yes, Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, I just wanted to clarify, the Second Amendment, which is deleting the sentence that says, "previous study contradicts the previous sentence." And you mentioned that that's the way that it is in the current plan, but it's there because of a Scrivener's error. There isn't a new study that changes this. It's just wasn't right the first time.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions of Ms. Spear? If not, this is the time for the public hearing on the Shoreline Restoration Plan Updates. Again, those of you who are attending virtually, if you'd like to provide live virtual testimony, you'll need to join our Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number indicated on the screen and entering the meeting ID number as indicated. Outside of the public hearing, anyone who may have signed in, which I see no names on the sign-in sheet, but that doesn't preclude anyone physically present to approach the podium and testify during this public hearing. Ms. Schumacher, do we have any virtual attendees wishing to testify during the public hearing on the Shoreline Restoration Plan Updates?
Mayor, we have no attendees at this time with their virtual hands raised.
Hey, notwithstanding the fact that I have a blank sheet, are there any individuals in the audience who wish to address, the council provide testimony during this public hearing on the Shoreline Restoration Plan Updates? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next, ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 770, adopting the 2022 carry-forward budget adjustment.
For this item, we have our Deputy City Manager Todd Kraus to provide an overview for council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item was presented to you at the study session on April 25, followed by the public hearing on May 2. There have been no changes to the proposed request since it was originally presented. That's my quick presentation.
Very good. Are there any members of the council with questions for Ms. Kraus? Again, for the benefit of the audience, we had a significant study session on this. Mr. Anderson has signaled.
I was gonna move adoption.
Very good. I can take that as well.
I'll second that, then I do want to make a comment.
Been moved by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt ordinance number 770. Any further discussion? Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to make a couple of comments because when you go through this, besides some collective bargaining agreements and things that we have to do, there's additional money for abatement. There's additional money for public art, including the Signal Box Program that we've been very supportive of. There's also some interesting things here on graffiti removal that we have heard a lot about from a lot of people that were actually using some grant money to purchase a sandblaster to assist in the removal of graffiti. So hopefully, we'll see some positive things in that regard. I know it's something that's been bugging a lot of people for a long time, including members of this council. There's also work on signage in our parks. And then there are, as usual, a number of street projects and various things like that going forward. So I think that there's really a lot of positive things in this budget. It is, it is, so looking, looking forward to a really good year and it's supporting a lot of new activities and various things like that, so. There's a lot of good things in there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bokey. It does help to kind of elucidate some of the positive things that we're focused on because, as they say, where your wallet is, there goes your heart also. And that's a matter of policy with regard to our budget. Any further items of discussion on this matter? If not, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 770, signified by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Ordinance 770 has been adopted. We now move to unfinished business. I don't see any, Mr. Caulfield, unless you have something up your sleeve.
Nothing up my sleeve, Mayor.
Very good. Any new business?
Nothing up my other sleeve, Mayor.
Very good. Well, since you're sleeveless, we'll now turn to reports by the city manager.
I'd like to call upon our city attorney to give you an update on a resolution specific to a policy as it relates to naming and renaming of city assets.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. And I am bringing this to you tonight. You may be wondering to yourselves, why do we now get the city attorney? What did we do wrong that it's no longer the Friendly Parks Director? It's the city attorney. And so here's the deal. The policy questions that you posed were very clear to us. The more attorney-ish questions were things about semicolons. I don't want to mention any particular names on that one. And some question about the flow of the resolution. Could a citizen look at this and kind of see how it works? And so what you've got before you tonight is our answer to that. And I would suggest that we're probably beyond the point of fine-tuning because the real objective is not to contemplate each and every naming opportunity that might come your way. It could be anything. It could be a building sometime. It could be a park. It could be some little traffic circle in somebody's neighborhood. The real issue is giving people a process. And so rather than try to determine each and every potential issue that might come to you, what we've tried to do is lay out a very clear process. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have in that regard. I think that we've really kind of reworked it so that it flows a little bit. And a person proposes a name, it goes through a process, it comes back to you. Or you propose a name, it goes through a process and it comes back to you so that you know what the committee was thinking when they saw your suggestion. As I said, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
It's a bit of an oxymoron, a lawyer that's happy to answer questions. But to the extent there may be some, council members, do you have any questions of Ms. Walker? Mr. Branstadter, then Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Walker. To summarize, which it looks to be a shorter resolution than the one we looked at before, that am I, one of the concerns before was that the was a matter about the fact that says, demonstrated community support for proposed name on a petition that includes not less than 600 signatures as a mandatory component of an application. And I'm looking on page 266, which is, actually, it's on the first page of the resolution itself. That, that seems to be a very inflexible criteria and itself, that that seems to be a very inflexible criteria and seems to indicate that that's like the only way that community or neighborhood support for a small piece done could be get into, get the process started. And while I agree that when we're holding this up against the example that we experienced with Fort Silicon Park, a petition with 600 names might have been helpful at the beginning to determine what we were going to do. I don't know that in cases going forward, as you indicated, they might include renaming parks and buildings, but they could be renaming smaller sites and things to do that. So I think that if the naming process application should contain information relating to demonstrated community support for the proposed name, just period, and let the applicant choose what form his demonstrated community support is. I mean, we're going through a process of where this application and the process, as I understand, is an application will show up on the city manager's desk, and he will decide whether it's suitable to forward and to a commission. The commission will go through, and the commission will go through a public process, and they'll make some sort of determination around that, starting with what the applicants have submitted, but also based on what they hear going forward. And then it will come to us, and we'll make a determination about the public support, being able to go and do that, instead of saying 600 means there's public support for any renaming process. And 599 means it doesn't even get considered. And if that is, in your example of wanting to name a traffic circle or of doing all that, because I think there is some situations where something would want to be named by a neighborhood to recognize something that is unique to their small area that the rest of the city doesn't do that. And then other things like our major parks, or this building, or something like that. The standard is much different. So again, I would ask that we word it to say demonstrated community support is important. It's, onus is on the applicant to show how that is determined, and not say, go and get a petition like we're trying to get an initiative on the ballot in November.
Mr. Anderson?
Having watched the parks folks go through this, I differ from Mr. Branstadter in his opinion. It might be 500, it might be 600. It's an objective standard that starts the process rolling and is a barrier to frequent applications. I think that there's an interest in keeping names of things the same generally. People have addresses, they have landmarks, they have history. You saw the passion of folks on the library. Personally, I think it should still be the Thamesworth Library. We have, you know, Harry Todd gave land, got his name on the park. Should probably move cautiously about changing something like that. We also should remember that we have a representative government. If the Oakbrook Pocket Park should be named after the person who took care of it for 25 years, and the neighborhood isn't big enough to get 600 folks to sign, there are some of you who live in Oakbrook, and you can represent your neighbors and bring it to council, and council can change the name, which is going to have to happen at the end of the day anyway. So I like that there's a barrier there. It doesn't cause unnecessary reason, unreasonable use of city resources, triggering the process every time somebody gets excited. So I'm open to having it be a number other than 600, but I think there should be something that's in there that's objective, that people can look at and say, well, if I want to do this, I have to find so many of my friends.
Thank you both for those points. Any other thoughts or comments on that? Mr. Bokey?
So, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Anderson, how did they come up with 600, though? Was it, was there a, is there a percentage?
One percent.
Of the?
One percent of the population.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Any other thoughts or comments? Ms. Farmer?
I'm curious as to our history. Do we have frequent applicants to change names? Is this, is this an issue about use of city resources?
Councilmember Farmer, we do not see this frequently. We are starting to see it more as we have more city history. And that's certainly not to suggest there's some onslaught of it. That's not the case at all. But we are seeing it a little more frequently than we did at the outset of cityhood.
Thank you. I, 600 feels like a pretty high burden to me. And I understand that we, a small group can always come to council, and it would have to go through us anyway. But I guess I would rather not put that burden into law if we didn't have to. So I would advocate either removing it or making the barrier lower.
Do you have a suggestion?
Maybe under 100 or 100, something. It's still, it's a lot of work. And I get, I get the need for the barrier so that these aren't frivolous, but, you know, I don't know, discuss.
Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree that there needs to be something quantitative on there. We need to have a number. 600 is, I agree, a little bit high. So I would think, I think 100 is too low. So split the difference, something like that in the middle, 250, 300. I think that that's attainable. I think if it's something that you really want to do, you will go out and get the signatures, and it does show and move people to really, you know, you have to put the effort forward if this is something that you want to get done. So I like a quantitative number, something on there.
Any further thoughts there on, say, a number of 250 to 300? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, personally, I was, when I looked at it, I was thinking 250 to 300, somewhere there, about half of what was proposed here, because it is a pretty high barrier. And then the other question is, signatures of whom? Somebody who lives in Lakewood? Adults?
Should be of residents in Lakewood, probably. Of residents in Lakewood or?
Adult residents.
Residents in Lakewood.
Mr. Mayor, as to that, you were thinking on the same line as the other folks who are sharing their thoughts. And that, that is to say, if you start asking for signatures, how do you, how do you then verify the signatures and make sure that they're, for example, Lakewood residents, if that's what you care about? Adult residents, do they have to be voters? That sort of thing. So that does create its own process. When we're talking about petitions here, having been through an initiative and referendum process with the city, our city clerk does some of that, but then so does the county auditor. And I don't know whether the county auditor would do that. Certainly would not do that for free if we had that situation.
It would certainly be cheaper to have less than 600 signatures to verify. So what about having a read on a petition that includes not less than 300 signatures by residents of the City of Lakewood over the age of majority or something like that, right? Or of voting age or whatever? Whatever the proper term is. What do you guys think? Guys and gals?
For this showing public support, I'm not so concerned that they're registered voters. If they put a Lakewood address down.
Right.
That would be good enough verification for me saying, you know, that's a high enough number, that if you have that, that's, that's some degree of public support.
Mr. Branstadter's got his hand up, then Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, yeah, I definitely would not want to use registered voters, and would want to use residents, simply because I, I think that the demographics of registered voters are different than the demographics of residents, and wouldn't want to be making a distinction that appeared that way. That, as far as putting an age requirement on it, I definitely would want to make this something where young people say opinion mattered. So I wouldn't want to say you got to be 18 or something to do that. I don't know, you know, if we're going to put an age, I'd say 12, or something like that, because that'll put you in middle school. Okay? But, you know, you know, I really don't necessarily want to disenfranchise teens, folks who are likely to come up with an idea of, to be able to go and do that. So, and if the scribbles look like they're from a kindergartner, I guess, maybe, who's ever reviewing it could, could wonder what's going on. But, but if we're going to use an age, I'd want it to be low.
I have no problem with that. My only question is how much of an administrative nightmare? Do we crave for staff to try to verify the age of the folks who've signed the petition?
Well, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the easiest administrative function for us is if you have people sign and simply put a Lakewood address. That is very administratively simple. If we get much beyond that, particularly when younger folks don't always have much in the way of proof of age anyway, that would be the easiest for us.
So just say Lakewood residents.
So where we're at is I'm hearing a number of about 300 people will sign, they will put their Lakewood address.
Looking to my right, looking to my left, do we have consensus?
And here's where we're at. You're in a regular meeting. Your next regular meeting is the first meeting in June. Your homework assignment, should you choose to accept it between now and then, is if you do not like the language that we've talked about here tonight, you are to either contact us to help you craft or craft on your own an amendment, because we're going to bring this back and we're going to pass it.
We know we're not taking action tonight, but we're trying to be generous with
Yes, exactly.
Our attorney, who likes to answer questions, to give her as keen of guidance as we can.
No, this is very helpful.
Mr. Branstadter?
In that case, Mr. Mayor, I just had one other
Certainly.
thing, thinking back to our previous experience, is that I would like to somehow say that an application is for one location, and that each one has to, because we ended up with a process that started, oh, will you name this? Well, if not that, could you name this? And then we ended up with trying to deal with a number of them, and say, if you want to consider three, then submit three applications. But say that an application is for a single site.
That's fair enough. Mr. Bokey?
Are you going to tell me it should be for multiple sites? Multiple sites at multiple levels, including buildings, parks, parking spaces.
Different bricks on the building?
Bricks. No, I just, really, I do have a serious point. I think 300 is a good compromise. I think that's still pretty high, but it's a good compromise. What I care mainly about, and I'm looking over at a counselor, is that the council has the last say, right? So that it goes through this process, and, and we're very deliberative about it. But if things come up where it's like, no, this probably isn't a good idea, and various things happen, that the council has the ability to just, to be the last word on, on all these things. And that's where I'm at.
Anything else for the good of the order? Or have we given enough input? Councilmember Farmer?
If this rises to the level of we don't need to worry about it, please do let me know. On page 266, item C, numbers one through four, numbers one, two, and four appear to be about when an applicant from a neighborhood or what have you brings something to be renamed. Number three appears to be if the City Council decides on its own that it should, that it would like to rename something. Do they need, is it okay to have them mixed, mixed and mingled in this section? Or does the City Council initiative, initiated one need to be on its own? I do not know the answer to that question.
And Councilmember Farmer, if it's not clear to you when you read it, then we probably ought to clarify. But section C, if you'll look at the beginning of it, it starts out saying submitted to the city or referred by the City Council. So the intent was to create that umbrella over all requests and one through four. Three, obviously specifying that it only applies to City Council, but the others would apply to all of the above listed in the umbrella portion of C. We did heed the council's concern at our last discussion that they want this to be clear to anyone looking at it. So obviously, if there's a question there, we can separate those out.
Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, I believe that in that regard, if subsection C solely referred to proposed naming information submitted to the city, will be reviewed by the city manager, a designee will then direct the process appropriate, and then delete paragraph three, and then have another lettered paragraph that speaks to if the City Council wants to initiate it, how that goes through, which may or may not have a similar set of actions by the city But maybe it's not so much a review as in the council referred, it's the city manager will then direct the process appropriate to the proposal, depending on what it is. You could clarify that by just having one section for submitted applications, and then have another paragraph that just speaks to what will happen if the council wants to do that, to get the process started. There seems to be a little bit of space at the end of the resolution to still keep it on three pages.
If not, I think you've got everything we've got to give you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caulfield, any further updates on your end?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to next call upon our Planning Manager, Courtney Brunel, to give the council a brief update on where we give the council a brief update on where we are with the tree code. And she will be providing that update virtually. Ms. Brunel?
Yes, good evening. John, I'm just going to share my screen quickly. Hopefully that didn't make me freeze. Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Caulfield. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Caulfield mentioned tonight, I'm here to provide an update on the tree preservation code specifically pertaining to the public participation and public outreach. On Friday, Mr. Caulfield included a few documents as part of the city manager's update, and I'm going to summarize some of those. And we've added to it quite, just a little bit, as well as give an overview of where we are going next. Also, I'm going to share our newly launched public engagement webpage, which our communications manager and I have been working on for the last couple of weeks. And we hope to have be the primary landing spot for all things related to trees now and in the future. So public outreach has really been at the center of our work thus far. And as part of the scope of work that was approved by the city council last December by Burke, they outlined six main areas of focus for public outreach, which you can see are listed here and are also how we categorized for the chart that was shared last Friday. First, looking at awareness and advertising, we have the main page thus far has been focused on the tree committee itself. We now also have a more generic trees webpage, which I will give an overview at the end of the presentation. We've created a fact sheet, and we've had a series of social media posts. In the future, we will continue to engage with folks using these websites as well as social media. And we also have a Lakewood Connections article included in the spring issue, which will go to every Lakewood resident. The advisory committee had a total of seven meetings from March 1st to concluding on April 28th. The majority of the 13 appointed members were present at each of the meetings. There was one committee member that resigned, so we ended up with 12 committee members. For the first couple of meetings, our consultants Burke and Planet Geo, led by Planet Geo's urban forestry department and their arborists, provided the committee general best practices, best available science, and really laid the groundwork for the committee to be able to be informed to make recommendations on the revised code. We were also happy to be joined by Darren Masters from WDFW, who is our area habitat biologist for two of the meetings. And he made himself available to answer questions pertaining to tree preservation in general, but more specifically pertaining to Gary Oak tree management and best practices. In the end, the committee voted on 12 key issues related to tree preservation, and a summary report is being presented to the planning commission this Wednesday. And it has been made available online for the public to view and provide comment on. For the sake of time, at each meeting, we did not have public comment during the ad hoc committee meetings, but we did receive emails and letters in advance of almost every meeting from members of the public. And those comments were included in the packet and have been included online as well. For targeted outreach, we had emails that went out to stakeholders, which is this list that was approved in the public participation plan in order to request some targeted interviews with folks that we had not yet heard from. So over the course of last month, we held six interviews with those folks that are listed here. And in the future, we intend to use that same list as the starting point for an email blast in order to advertise future public outreach opportunities. For comment collection, we held, we've held one virtual, what we called a lunchtime tree talk, where we had nine participants that attended. We also launched a survey that had 108 participants between March 31st and April 26th. We ended up closing the survey on May 4th. That last survey response was on April 26th. The summary of the survey was included in the material submitted by, or given to you by John Caulfield last Friday. We're making it a little easier to read, and then we will also be publishing all of that information online. For next up on comment collection, we're going to have another tree tour. And this time, it's going to be in person, and it's going to be co-hosted. We have heard back from WDFW as well as the Tacoma Tree Club. Both of them are on board to join us for that tree talk, likely to be held at Port Stillicum in one of the first two weeks in June. Additionally, we will hold another virtual tree talk, where we're going to go over the actual redlined version of the code before it goes to public hearing for the planning commission. Prior to that public hearing before the planning commission, we also plan to mail a postcard to every property owner, informing them of the public hearing, as well as directing them to the website to give them multiple opportunities and multiple avenues to make comment. And we will, of course, share results online as we continue to collect all of our information and data. For legislative meetings, we just started at the planning commission. They received an overview on May 4th. We will be presenting, again, as I mentioned, this Wednesday. And I anticipate that we will be meeting with them throughout June and part of July. We expect that the public hearing will likely be held the second meeting in June or the first meeting in July. And then we plan to come to you after that concludes, which right now is slated for August to September. Last thing, going back to our new tree website. This is the new website that Jim Kofra, our communications manager and I have been working on. I won't, it is live, so you're welcome to go and take a tour. And we can send out a link after the council meeting, but cityoflakewood.us/trees. It includes an overview, including announcements. We have published the committee's report here for any member of the public to be able to go ahead and view. We've also tried to incorporate into this webpage some basic FAQs that frequently might show up on a Google search engine. So now when individuals are searching for some of these questions, they'll be redirected to this website using Google. We have taken some of our code excerpts linked to the city's permitting dashboard, again with the FAQs, answering what Lakewood is doing to protect trees with the video that we did earlier this year. And what I really wanted to show was this public comment section. This is currently live and comes to our email inbox. So individuals have an opportunity right now to go in and provide input on the specific committee report. And as this updates, for example, we move forward to the planning commission public hearing, we will update this to make it for the planning commission public hearing. And continue to collect feedback that way as well. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Brunel? Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Brunel. I appreciate getting, getting to where we're going. And we're finishing, close to finishing the first phase of this process to get the code updated and move forward. Just a conflict to clear my mind. I thought you said that the recommendations were going to go, of the committee, were going to go to the planning commission this week?
That's correct.
Okay. And then on the website, you had a headline that says the recommendations are going to the planning commission in June.
I think that that might have been referring to the public's hearing. Planning Commission is beginning to do. Sorry, I'm trying to find the June, the June note.
It was, it was in, it was in one of the headings under the, on the webpage.
Did I just, did I just display? It does mention that we're reviewing the report in May, but a public hearing about the tree preservation will be in June or early July.
Yeah, it was, it was further up on the webpage.
Okay. And then here under announcements, we have that the planning commission is beginning to review on May 4th. Though certainly if there is, oh, I see.
Yeah, announcements there, yeah.
So that is technically accurate, though. Thank you for pointing it out, because we can make it clearer. We have not yet drafted the redline code revisions. So right now, we're still just presenting the framework that is going to lead to the actual redline version of the code. So the redline version of the code or those suggested code revisions will be coming out in June at the next planning commission meeting. But we can change that language to make it.
Okay. And then my other question had to do with you had some, I think the term was some outreach interviews with six organizations. And I didn't recognize any of them as being environmental groups. And there's a utility, there's a, an organization that's in housing, our own parks department, that the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, which I wasn't sure, but I would have thought we would have, if we were, it was intended to be reaching out to stakeholders, I think I would have looked for something like, you know, the Audubon Society or Fortura or someone like that, that's, that's in that, that realm as well, that could have had information. And I don't know if there's still some time to take a look at whether or not there's one or two noted regional environmental groups that would provide some, some information, or are we too far along in the process for the committee to even consider such information?
So the committee wasn't involved in the interview process. This would certainly still, it's still timely. The intention, when we were looking at targeted interviews, was we wanted to hear from the groups that we had not yet heard from. And the makeup of the ad hoc committee included several individuals from environmental groups, including the Audubon Society, as well as the Gary Oaks Conservancy. And so, because we had members from those organizations already represented, and the questions that we were answering were largely related to the questions being discussed in front of the committee, we didn't reach out to those groups for those targeted interviews. But we can, they're certainly still trying to do so.
Okay. So just so I understand, the interviews are apart from the, from the committee process. And the information from the interviews is for the benefit of the planning commission?
Yes, and for the benefit of the city council, and to be able for, for us to collect data in order to create a redline strikeout version of the code. So some of the questions that we asked pertained to, of course, what they would like to see in terms of code revisions, as well as ideas for offsite replacement, information gathering, which were similar questions that we posed at the ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions of Ms. Brunel? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your work on this. I assume we will get in our packet or just can access on the website the preliminary report from the committee.
Affirmative, Mayor.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel.
Thank you.
That's it.
Actually, that's not it, Mayor. I did find some things up both sleeves.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
So, so thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Farmer was contacted by the Transportation Choices Coalition, requesting this body to consider a proclamation recognizing June as ride transit month. And unless there's any objection from, from this body, Mayor, we can certainly bring that back for, for action as part of a, probably your first regular meeting in June, June 6th. So on, on this past Saturday, the city hosted the 2022 Kids Fishing Event. And I think, as you all know, we, fortunately, we had a two, two-year break in that. But we were able to resume the event. Had over 200 youth participants ages two to 12, along with 250 family members, who were able to fish, many of them for the first time. And they were out, all of the kiddies out there, they were able to catch and keep up to three fend, three fish to take home, as well as their fishing pole and a certificate of catching the fish. There were volunteers out there to help them, you know, baiting the hook, cast the line, rail them in, clean them up, pack them up, and help them out. This event was free, and I want to thank the state's No Child Left Inside grant, Left Inside. So they weren't sitting around playing their video games and all of that. They were actually outside, enjoying the sunshine and having a great day. Of course, I want to thank our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth, and her team for a great event. But I'd also like to specifically call out our partners and volunteers who helped make the day a big success, starting with the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, who provided the nets and the fishing poles. The Clover Park Kiwanis Club, who provided hot dogs, chips, and water for all the volunteers and all the staff. The Lake City Community Church, who also provided volunteers and supported the event. The Lakewood Fish Hatchery, which provided 2,500 rainbow trout. Actually, that was the fish they were going after, which were rainbow trout. Our partners, the West Pierce Fire and Rescue District, who provided safety and first aid support. And then again, just want to stress, Ms. Dawsworth and all of her team who are out there on, on Saturday morning and into the afternoon to help, help this out. So it was a, it was, it was, it was a great day and glad to, you know, have these events coming back online. And a lot of happy smiley faces out there. AWC is going to be hosting its annual conference the third week in June. And as a part of that, they have their annual business meeting. I know, and as a part of the annual business meeting, each city in town is allowed three boning delegates. And I know Councilmember Brandstetter will be attending the conference. And so I think it would be appropriate to have him as a voting delegate. But if any of you, any of the rest of the council plan on either attending the conference, you know, if you'd like to be a voting delegate, you know, Mayor, maybe let us know. But also, if you're not planning to attend, you can participate in the annual business meeting virtually. So if you have any desire to do that. And typically, the, the business meeting surrounds issues surrounding bylaws and how the, how AWC operates and things like that. So, so usually the best part of the meeting is afterwards, because they have ice cream. But if you're attending virtually, it's not. It's Wednesday, June 23rd. And if I recall, the business meeting is at like three or four in the afternoon. So the conference this year is down in Vancouver, Vancouver, Washington. So. Also some good news to report, and it comes from Congresswoman Strickland's office. So she has moved forward our request for $2.5 million in support of the South Tacoma Way Project from 88th to 80th as one of her 15 community project funding projects. And so now that moves to full Congress. And I know Mayor Whalen followed up earlier this afternoon with a big, huge thank you for that. And so we did make the cut. So she will continue, I can guarantee you, she's going to continue to advocate for, for this project. At the end of the day, though, it will depend on, you know, Congress as a whole, whether or not all 15 projects are approved or not. But just wanted to point that out. And I'll just pass that on to you. This Saturday, actually very busy weekend, on Saturday morning into the afternoon is the youth summit. And I know many of you have signed up and volunteered to participate in that. So thank you very much for that. And then in the afternoon, from four to eight, we'll be having our first Saturday street festival with the theme Dancing in the Streets over at the Colonial Plaza. So there'll be music and food and a lot of fun to be had. And so just a friendly reminder there. I also know the Lakewood Rotary is having their online auction that kicks off on, I think Friday, actually, but also Saturday and Sunday. So with that, Mayor, that's, that's my report.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Caulfield? Mr. Brandstetter?
Mr. Caulfield, while you didn't mention it this evening in your, in your update, you mentioned something about the Humane Society contacting the city and wanting to relocate here. Yeah, I understand that's to move their facility that's down on, in Tacoma, in the industrial area, out, out here to the city.
Councilmember Brandstetter, they're, they're doing two things. One is, yes, they wish to move their, move from their current location to a larger location to allow them to expand, given that they have outgrown their current facility. And they have approached Lakewood to see if there is property in Lakewood that meets their, their, their size and their scope. And Ms. Newton, our economic development manager, has been working with them. It's, it might, it might be Lakewood, it might be Tacoma, it might be Bonnie Lake. But they're looking for, and I don't have it at my fingertips, but they're looking at a particular size property that they would like. And, but, but if they could find a location in Lakewood, they would certainly move to Lakewood.
So in Tacoma, they're in So in Tacoma, they're in, in, in an industrial site in the Nally Valley. In our zoning code, do we have something that's specific? I mean, it's not a veterinarian, you know, or is our code even, even specify where they might be eligible to go? I can think of places that I wouldn't want that facility. But, and I'm not so sure that we have so much industrial land that I would want to have that be the best use for.
So Councilmember Branstadter, they are, the city attorney reminded me, they are looking for six acres. So that's part of the, that's part of the site selection process, which would include not just the size, but also, you know, what the underlying zoning needs are and things like that. But as far as I know, they haven't identified a, a site and locate, a six acre site and location.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll turn to council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just a couple of items. I appreciate Joe Clark coming here. I remember, I'm, I'm, remember the first time I saw the Fort Stillichman by. I think my kids were playing soccer, or one of them was probably playing soccer. I don't know how the other two were. And I, I walked over there and I'm watching some of the races. I ended up talking to a kid from Capital High School, a young man from Capital High School in Olympia, and asked him how his day went. And, but I do remember, and it goes this far back, is that everything was dry. The park had not been improved yet. So I don't even know how far that goes back. Everything was just bone dry at the, and it was hot. And it was, and so I, I agree with him. The improvements in the park have, have just gone a long way towards making it a really great venue. I mean, it was a good place to run, I think. And the course was good. But the, just the nature of the whole park and the amount of improvements we've made in that park since that very first time I, I walked over there and watched those races. And I can't even tell you, it would have been in the early 2000s, probably, when I, when I did that. Really a nice venue. Glad to Public Works Week. Glad we approved a couple more items for the Public Works Department to work on. And, and I know in the tip and in the budget tonight, there were a lot of other items that we're making room for. So really excited about that. And I hope that they know their work is, is really appreciated and, and we're, we're trying our best to keep them busy. I am concerned about the, the library comments tonight. And I guess for the reason is that I had somebody just come up and tell me after Planning Commission meeting a week ago, oh, they're going to close the library. And I'm like, used to me. And so maybe I missed an email or something. But, you know, we've worked pretty hard to be partners with them. And I feel a little bit kind of like they're kind of out there on a limb a little bit. And there are a lot of things to think about. And for the amount of time that we've put in and trying to urge them to, to plan, and I get that COVID has been a difficult time. But a little disappointed kind of in how that whole thing has transpired, to, to put it mildly. But looking forward to some solutions. You know, I didn't know the roof was bad. I didn't know. I went online and looked at their, their press release. And this is kind of like, oh, this building is falling apart. It's been a while since I've been in that building, but took me by surprise a little bit. So I'll leave it at that. One more item, I think, on the fishing. Appreciate it, glad. But rather than rainbow trout, I, I think that we should do piranhas. I think it would be much more exciting. Raised on, being fed red meat, just throw them in there. And I think the kids would like it better, too. They'd be really excited. I think it'd be really, get a lot of buzz.
Yeah. There's none left, apparently. Mr. Branstadter?
Well, we could, we could, we could maybe import some gators or something. Needs to do that. But I, 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 I am glad that from Mr. Clark's presentation, hearing about the, you know, the fishing derby and that other things are that we, we really have a little bit of momentum of breaking out of the COVID standard of cancellation or minimizing things that have been able to go. And I think that's, you know, really, really important for us to be able to go and do. With Mr. Bokey, I did feel somewhat blindsided by the library sending out an email to library cardholders and saying, well, we've chosen a date to close the library, and we don't know where you're going to go. But you know, there is a library and university place to be able to go and do that. And we've really been working with the library. And they encourage us to work with them, and then they, they, they go back. It's been eight years we've been dealing with that. I mean, we went back to the thing of where we talked about libraries were important catalyst sites. And was it, was it, was it an item of discussion when we were doing the downtown subarea plan about being able to go and do that? And we, we've spent, it almost seems like, on trying to get the interest going on, that we've spent more money than the library district has in trying to build interest and, and be able to go and do that between, we bought a piece of property in Telukum. We spent money to hold on to an option on a piece of property downtown, and they, they backed away. And here, a month ago, they were here saying, we want to really do a good evaluation of what we're doing. And in less than a month, they changed executive directors and this, and, 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 and made one of the decisions before the process to gather information was even there. So I feel for the folks that are in the community. I think that it, but it is important to note that we've got a little bit of educating of the community to do about, as you did this evening, Mr. Mayor, about the library is the library district. When the library was built, it was a one-city library. And it was run by a board that managed that one library for a long. And then I wasn't around or involved, but then they merged it into the larger, larger system, and it became the largest library in that system. And it's been there. So, you know, that's something that I, you know, I fully agree with all their remarks about libraries are important. Okay. And, and, and to me, in my life, from when I was young to other times, to include having to supervise a library when I worked at, at a college, that, but it's not the building. It's not the building. It's a library and what goes on at the library and what a library does for the, to the, for the people that come there. Libraries are places of inspiration and, and of other things that build the things to do that. So, and I was a little bit concerned about one of the comments about designating it as a historic location because five years ago, when the library turned 50, and we had a joint meeting with the Landmarks Inherited Board and said, you ought to put the library on your list of things you're considering of looking to do that. And they didn't want to do it. We got too many other things on the list. We didn't want to do that. And so to hear tonight that we, we should have done that, or should do that, was disappointing. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Well, I'm one of the biggest defenders of libraries, and I, particularly the Pierce County Library System, where I'm a former employee. And I, I admit to being a little blindsided by that, by the decision to close. I did want to point out that the, I'll put a plug in for the Lakewood United meeting this Thursday morning at 7:30 AM at Burr's Restaurant. The brand new Pierce County Library System Director, Gretchen Caserati, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. She started today, and she will be speaking this Thursday morning on the closure. And so I plan to be there and ask a few pointed questions myself. I know, I know we can, I'm hopeful that we can come to some sort of, of resolution. I do agree with Councilmember Branstadter that, that it's, it's not the building. It's, it's all of the amazing things you can, you can do with your mind and all of the inspiration around you. So. I also wanted to say that I'm thankful that we passed the Phillips Road sidewalk project. Being an Oakbrook resident and driving on Phillips Road and seeing people as, as cars are weaving in and out and not paying attention to the, to the curves and they're, they're cutting shorter. It's just, it's just incredibly dangerous. And we've got kids that walk to school there. And ever since the, the new sidewalks have been put into onyx, there's many more people out, out walking. And they're, they've got their strollers, and they've got, got their bikes. Lots more people are mobile, and they're heading over to the, to the Wildlife Refuge. And so, which is really well maintained. So I, I think it's going to be a real huge benefit to the, to the community. And last but not least, I really wanted to thank the city attorney and our friendly Parks and Recreation Director for all of their work on the renaming resolution. It's, it's a very orderly flow. All the semicolons are in the right, right spot, aren't they, Mr. Mayor? And I believe it'll really serve us well now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like everyone has said most of the things that I would just echo. I agree with, was blindsided with the library. My family uses it all the time, and we have through. And it was a, a great lifesaver during COVID to be able to do the drop off and the pickup of books and all the things and utilize the library. And yes, it is more, it's not just the building. It's everything that it brings to our community. So I am hopeful that we will be able to, to come to some sort of solution with that. And I also want to congratulate our Public Works Department. I agree, they deserve more than a week, but they get a great Public Works Week. And I know that it's a National Public Works Week. And it is, they do so much that we don't even know about or think about. So I appreciate them very much. And I'm looking forward to the Youth Summit this weekend and Dancing in the Streets. So we'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Couple of video-related items. What I noticed at our, our monitors up on the podium here are in mirror image. Unlike that, I just want to make sure that the people at home see us, not in mirror image. Because otherwise, they're going to complain that the flags are arranged wrong again. It should be just a flip of the switch. For the city attorney, not now, but at some time, do we still need to continue virtual portion of our meetings under the governor's last change? I don't know. And I'm not going to research it. But if you know, it'd be nice. I participated today in a meeting of the Association Defense Committee's Board, Communities Board, with Patrick O'Brien, the director of what was formerly OEA, is now OLDCC, regarding the DCIP program. We don't currently have an application or a project that's application-ready for that in the cycle. The, the biggest change is in reaction to complaints regarding the grading of, of programs in the past. And there were, depending on who was doing it, the applicants didn't know what the rules were going to be. Was it going to, did you have to build a gym? Or did you have to build a runway that's off-base? You know, it's just, they, they were all mixed up as to the priorities. So they, they kind of quantified the military value component in a way that's not particularly in line with the original intent of the program. So what has come down is that there's going to be 100 points for military value in this grading system. This isn't, this, this is kind of statutory regulatory coming out of the Defense Department. And the highest criteria is going to be military value. The next section is going to be base resilience or facility resilience. And the lowest qualitatively will be the quality of life. And the best, the interesting thing is the best quality of life grade is going to be in a fixed range, which is lower than the worst base resilience, which is lower than the worst military value. The graders are going to be O6 and above, one each from the three primary services, and one from DOD SES. And so they are going to be grading the, the projects pretty much like they would grade a MilCon project on base. What's this going to do for me operationally? It was clear that Patrick O'Brien didn't think much of that. And he said, you, he alluded to the fact that there were many very good grant writers or, or writers on the call, and that they were pretty much going to take the communities. And the community's interpretation of what they do with some great weight when, when they, when they make that evaluation. So more to come, and we may be in the mix again someday. Humane Society, I kind of see that initiative as counter to business development. Why would we want to take six acres of industrial property, encourage taking six acres of industrial commercial property out of the economic development spirit and putting it in an untaxed situation that generates no property tax and no sales tax to speak of? The, yeah, it, library, all these things kept him. I was, like many of you, I was a Carnegie Library kid. Those actually had some architectural features to them that made them classic buildings. Spent a bunch of time in the basement, finding books when I was a kid. And there are a lot of things driven by nostalgia. Sometimes there are values, sometimes there are not. I still long for the 57 Chevy I drove to high school. It'd been my grandfather's for his 70th birthday. And I still may buy one someday that looks just like and is blue. But ours had, it wasn't something we could save. It had been rear-ended and had a slight brain bend from there being rear-ended. And then it got, developed a cracked block in it class more to fix it. And, and it was not one that you could restore to pristine condition, even if you had the ability and the money. So I'm really interested in seeing what the library's report on the building is. And it may be that, that it was purely a subjective statement that they made. And it may be that there is dated wire, got one nice pipe, a 50-year-old elevator that can't be fixed because you have to fabricate the parts, and no space for future uses. So it's, it's a judgment call. I am disappointed that they didn't involve us in the process when we've been trying to engage in this. Somebody reminded us for about eight years. Speaking of trying to make judgments, when we're looking at the trees here, I also grew up on timber dollars. And my favorite place to play was in the woods. And that was kind of an oxymoron in a way. But you, you realize that if nobody cut trees down and cut them up to pieces, you didn't eat. But if they cut them all down, you didn't have a place to play. So there's a balance. And people So there's a balance, and people who are interested in regulating other people's property rights are generally absolutists. We want it one way. And the people who have the property rights usually aren't particularly concerned until they want to put the ADU in to help us comply with growth management, and they can't cut a tree down. So I just caution you that a lot of those places aren't always the making, aren't always the correct argument. And I would freely, freely admit that a pristine natural environment is better off if the land is uninhabited by humankind. But we have to find the balance. And I hope as it goes to the Planning Commission, they come back with a balanced view. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, good news on the fishing. I was happy to hear that that was a great turnout. So that was good to hear. The library, I've appreciated the comments that were made tonight. One of the things that we've talked about in the past was how do we educate the members on what we, I mean, the residents, on what it is that the council is responsible for? And Deputy Mayor, thank you for explaining that this afternoon. So it was, that was needed. So thank you for that. Let's see. I attended the Elected Officials Council on Thursday. It was well-attended, it was good information. One of the things that I really appreciated was that Mr. Anderson did say that the new video will include McCord Field. There was a lot of buzz at my table and around that, the whole video. It talked about a lot of things, but being joint-based and never mentioned McCord. So I'm glad to know that that's going to be corrected. But it had Army showing what the Army did with the C-17. It wasn't anything to say McCord, other than the C-17. So that was just a discussion at our table. And then on Saturday is going to be a busy day. I will be attending the Youth Summit. Hopefully, I'm going to make the memorial on Heritage Hill, and I will have a booth at Dancing in the Streets. So, yeah, so that's going to be a busy day, and I, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Just a couple of comments on the public comment tonight. It was great to have Mr. Clark here. It's wonderful to get feedback that our efforts in improving a regional facility truly is appreciated by those who use it and value it. So it was great to have him to give us the feedback from economic development, as well as what we've done, what staff has done, frankly, to make it a great facility. On the library system, I think we've all talked a lot about that. We are certainly more than willing partners for them, and I think we have demonstrated that, and we hope to be by our, not only our policy commitment, but our financial commitment. So I'm hopeful for a better outcome. I, too, was taken a little bit aback by the abrupt sort of closure. I've had structural engineering friends of mine who are lifelong Lakewoodians who have said, you got to be kidding that they've got that kind of structural challenge there, but we don't have the report. It's their system, their facility to run, but we have been providing probably more financial support that could have corrected any deficiencies, and they've probably invested in their maintenance. But that's just, you know, my editorial comment. But again, we're here to help. I think the process we're going to go forward and engage in is going to be helpful. I think it's going to be helpful to educate the public and give them a voice, and I think that's always critical. And the folks who were here tonight, it was great to see them. I think it was wonderful to have that kind of comment and robust neighborhood discussion about what they perceive to be a true gem for the community. So Wednesday, I, I attended this last Wednesday a Pierce Transit meeting with the CEO and CFO to talk about funding of the two major projects that they've got going, BRT being the one that we've heard about. So they have a funding gap of about 66 million that they're working to close. It may include some financing that they may take out under some federal finance, which is interesting, that could help them close the gap, and more to follow. I'll fill you in because there will be a vote on that, and I'll seek your input before I make any sort of final vote on that particular topic. Thursday, I did attend the SSMCP Elected Officials Council Breakfast. Great information, good networking, certainly a good program. While there certainly could be more mention of McCord Field, certainly in the videos, I was just pleased that there wasn't a Navy battleship present when Mr. Anderson made the presentation. So that was, that was a positive. Go Army, be Navy. Yeah. Over the weekend, I attended the Rotary District Conference in Victoria. It was a great meeting with lots of folks from around the region and the incoming president Lakewood Rotary, so I had to go and get a little bit more education than I already have. So that'll be another interesting adventure. Thursday, this week, on the 19th, I think we're going to have some conversations with our elected reps on the federal side, Mr. Coffield, you and I, and Deputy Mayor Moss. So we will report back on that to all of you. On the 21st of Saturday, I will be attending the Youth Council in the morning, doing a little bit of the opening welcoming for those who will be present. And then I think I'm helping facilitate a couple of the conversations. I don't know if others are going to be involved in that, but you're certainly welcome if you haven't already signed up. I won't be able to be at Dancing in the Streets because then I'm racing out to the coast to host a dinner for some Rotary people who won the item at the auction. But it reminds me to tell you about the auction, which is Saturday, 21st. If you haven't had a chance to register, there's still an opportunity to do so this Saturday. Yeah, it's a virtual auction. There's so much stuff going on on Saturday, so it is a virtual auction. Final thing, the Connections article that Councilmember Farmer graciously edited, looks great. I think it's good to go. The only thing I'd add is some sort of conclusion, some line like, see you down the road, or see you at all the wonderful events, or something like that, that just kind of ties it together. Yeah, just ties it together. So that is about it. In terms of Thursday's PCRC, I've got about five. Is it next week? Okay, yeah, we got to take a look, because this week would be problematic. Shows up as this week. Yeah. So anyways, double check, but you're on. Yeah, we'll double check. That's all I have for tonight, unless there are any other alibis. Meeting is adjourned.